All to order, the Tuesday, July 7th, 2015, City of Milton Common Council Meeting. And can I please have confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Thank you. Number two on our agenda, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. We have Robert Bolt signed in to speak. Would you like to speak now, or wait till your item is on the agenda? Oh, okay.
I'm not going to address a specific item on the agenda, so I'd like to speak now.
Sure, thank you.
My name is Bob Bolt. I live at 360 Wildfire Court, Milton, Wisconsin. And I'm the Chairman of the Board of Trustees for the Milton United Methodist Church. The church owns a property at 326 Chicago Street, which is our church parsonage. I'm here this evening regarding the proposed removal of the berman trees at the rear of 311 and 365 Sunnyside. These properties are known as a former FDS property and also handiart. Since the owner of these two lots on Sunnyside started removal of the trees along the top of the berm about two weeks ago, city staff has provided information about the owner's intentions. I am here this evening to request a neighborhood meeting be held with the abutting property owners and city staff to more fully understand what is being proposed for the removal of the berm and the restoration of screening along the rear lot line. I'm suggesting the meeting take place before any more trees are removed from the berm. Lastly, with regard to the former FDS property at 311 Sunnyside, city staff has indicated that when the existing building for the former FDS property was approved by the plant commission several years ago, that the tree line and berm were shown on the approved site plan. And my question for the city council is, since the berm and tree line were shown on the approved site plan passed by the plant commission, can the current owner remove that berm and tree line without plant commission approval? Thanks for your attention.
Thank you for coming. Is that something that we want to address now, or we should do that at a later date, his question? Or do you want to be in contact with him, Howie, at some point?
Well, right now in the city ordinance, it says for site plan, that you can do maintenance and replacement. We don't really have anything in there that requires you to have a berm on that area. It does say existing berm on the site plan, but I don't know, we don't really have an ordinance that says you can't remove a berm, because the only thing the ordinance says for the industrial is that you have to provide a screening from yourself to residential of a fence, or like a 60% opaque evergreen types of trees or something. So there's, you know, there's not a lot in the ordinance that prevents someone from removing something, as long as you replace it with what you're supposed to have for the screening purposes.
What I would suggest in terms of how to handle Mr. Bolt's comments is, of course, at something like this, the city can provide information back, it just can't discuss it. So that's fine for Mr. Robinson to provide the information. But in terms of further responding to Mr. Bolt's comments, I would suggest that the matter just be referred to Mr. Robinson to respond to it. And then if it does require any further action by either the plant commission or the council, then it can be brought to their attention and on their agendas.
And of course, you can contact Howie or anybody at the city at any time. And I think they all have voicemails too, right?
Yeah, we've talked about the different matters. And Bob has talked to Al too about it already.
Okay. So you could be in contact back and forth at some point over a neighborhood meeting, if that is something that we want to talk about? Okay, all right, thanks. Item number three is our beloved team building exercise, that we will move to further towards the end of the agenda. So other activities that we want to get through more efficiently, we can get through, and we'll do the team building at the end, unless there is strong opposition to us moving the team building to the end. Hearing none, we will move to number four. Are there any items that anybody wants to have moved down from approval of the consent Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? There's a motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion pass. Five, public hearing on special assessments for curb and gutter replacement scheduled on the Parkview Drive project. I will now open the public hearing. Go ahead and go up to the microphone, thank you. Can you tell us your first and last name and your address, please?
Robert Ripperger, at 201 Parkview Drive.
Thank you.
First of all, we're excited to see this happen, and things can be a great improvement to the city. We can't say enough good about the city. We have been here, I think, for four years, and we've had nothing but good experiences. We're really excited. What we're here for tonight is I know that we're going to get assessed possibly, you know, for the curb and gutter 50% tax on that, which I understand and agree with. But we're here to voice our opinion against that. Only for the simple fact is, I think we're under the assumption that we pay our taxes and our dues and everything as a public, you know, living in Milton and the city, and we pay for our portion of this building, and portion for the parks, and for the schools, and all those other things. And we assume that those are all part, public use, that everybody can use. And our street that we happen to live on is a highly trafficked street now, which is good. Nothing bad here from me, but I just, you know, wonder why we would be taxed or assessed any extra monies on something that is useful for everybody. So that's it. I'm happy either way that you guys decide, so I'm just voicing my opinion.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thanks.
Is there any further participants in our public hearing? Hearing or seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Mark, is there anything else I need to do on that? Item number six, discussion and possible action on the levying of special assessments for curb and gutter replacement on the Parkview Drive project. And you all have documents and resolution regarding the Parkview Drive assessment.
I can give just a brief update. If folks remember, at the meeting back in June, we discussed this item. The Parkview Drive repaving is currently underway. Folks have probably seen it, I saw Rip out there supervising today. So the work is underway, and the item that's on the agenda this evening is simply for the council to consider the approval of the action of levying the assessments. The next item on the agenda is the resolution that describes how those assessments would be levied.
Howie?
Okay, and as you know, you have the list of property owners that have assessments. And part of the assessment theory that, you know, that you had a question on, is that it is, it's more of a direct improvement to your property, and that's why there are assessments made, that can eventually increase the valuation of your property. That's part of the assessment theory. And the city does only charge half of that, because it is a use by everyone, and it's considered more of a use for like that direct property. And that's with almost all of our assessments. It would be water main, or sewer, or anything, it goes right directly to that property, is kind of the theory of assessments. But we do like, and it's, you know, I don't know if it's unusual or not, but everyone pays half of it. So that's part of like, per part of the question you had. And also, you know, this was like some of the second letters, we wanted to make sure everyone was properly notified. And if this is adopted, we will go out and make final measurements to make sure that these are the exact curb amounts before anyone was sent a assessment invoice.
Is there any further comment or discussion by the council?
Oh, and also, we did receive phone calls, you know, and visits about these. So we do know that people, you know, did receive the notifications, so.
Okay. Okay, so item number seven is action regarding a final resolution authorizing special assessment against benefited properties for the replacement of curb and gutter on Parkview Drive. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved, resolution 2015-11.
There's a motion and a second, and is there a second?
Oh, abstain.
There's a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Abstain.
All those opposed? The motion carries.
Abstain.
And councilperson Lotte abstained. Item number eight, discussion and possible action. Oh, I'm sorry, item number seven? I'm on eight.
We just have eight.
Item number eight, discussion and possible action regarding audit presentation from Hawkins Ash CPAs for the 2014 financial statements.
I handed out a financial summary, the full-blown financial statement and management letter. And Joe, who is one of the lead auditors on our audit this year, decided to have him come in, so you could hear about the city finances from someone other than me all the time. So he's going to go over the financial summary, and if you have any specific question, we will both be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Dan. Good evening, everyone. So you should have a packet, it's one of the spinner ones, and in the little window it says, "City of Milton, Wisconsin, Summary Financial Report." That's the one I'll be going over. The other two I won't be covering tonight, but feel free to read through them. So if you go to page two of that document, I just want to be clear that this kind of is a little disclaimer. It just says that this document is not an audited document. If you ever need to refer to the audit for the public or anything, refer to the thicker full financial statements. Does everybody have the right page? Okay. So if we go to page three, now I'm going to get into some of the numbers here. So page three is the balance sheet of all the city's funds combined into one column. The first column there is 2014, and the second column is 2013. So we kind of compare year to year. And I'll just go over some things that changed and kind of point out some highlights. The first line there, the cash and investments, you can see it decreased about $1.9 million from 2013. That's to be expected. At the end of 13, there was some debt issued for the new building and for some road projects. So all that cash from the debt is still on hand at the end of the year. And then in 2014, it was spent. So we would expect that balance to go down from 13. A couple more lines down there, the taxes receivable, $4,664,000 in '14. It's a decrease of about $750,000. The taxes receivable number can vary year to year, depending on what time, or when people pay their property taxes. Sometimes they pay it before year-end, sometimes after, and it can vary the taxes receivable. And also, the amount of taxes that the school district and the counties collect too. So that is not something to be concerned about. Couple more lines down there, the inter-funds, $281,000 compared to $662 in 2013. This is when funds owe another fund inside the city. The large decrease from last year is there was an advance, a sewer advance to TID number six that was paid off of $320,000. So it's good to see those getting reduced. And the last line in the asset section, the capital assets, those are only the utility capital assets, so the water, sewer, and storm. And you can see they decreased slightly, which is due to depreciation. So in total, the total city assets are $32,800,000, which decreased by about $3.6 million for the reasons that I just discussed. The next chunk there is the liabilities. The first line there, payables, $385,000, is down from $670. Again, at the end of 13, there were some large payables for certain projects, and at the end of '14, there were no large projects ongoing. And then you can see two lines down there, the inter-fund payables matches the amount from above. So one fund owes another fund. The due to other governments, $4,858,000, another decrease. That's the amount of taxes collected that are owed the other taxing districts, the school districts, counties, and such. The long-term obligations, that's just utility long-term obligations, so the water, sewer, and storm. And decreased by about $980,000. There was a water revenue bond that was paid off, and there was no new utility debt in 2014. So we'd expect that to decrease. So in total, liability is decreased by about $2.2 million. Then if we skip all the way down to the last section there, the equity section, the first line there, net position, that's your utility funds' fund balance. So the water, sewer, and the storm water. It's $17,926 at the end of '14, and $17,977. So it decreased by about $51,000. Part of that decrease is there was some construction process that we were kind of carrying year to year for a Parkview project that we wrote off. And so that created a decrease overall in the fund balance for the water and sewer. The second line there, the general fund balance, at the end of '14 is $1,472,000. At the end of 2013, it was $1,941,000. So it decreased by $468,000. There was a large transfer out to the Capital Projects Fund to cover capital outlay in 2014, which was budgeted for, so that's to be expected. And the last line there, the other fund balances, are all the other funds that we haven't talked about yet. 2014, it's $900,000. At the end of 13, it was $1,944,000. So it decreased by just over a million. And that goes back to those debt proceeds that we talked about before. You got all the cash, and then you spent it throughout 2014, which would result in a decrease in the fund balance. So overall, all the fund balances were down, but they can be explained and were to be expected. I just want to talk about the general fund balance for another second. The general fund balance is broken down into several categories, depending on how available the funds are. This isn't in your packet, but I'll just touch on it quick. So of your $1,472,000 of general fund balance, 961 is unassigned, or it doesn't have any sort of commitment. So we like to take that number and take it as a percentage of the total revenues for the general fund, and kind of that's like a benchmark to see where you're at. And your unassigned fund balance is 21% of your general fund expenditures, and that's pretty solid. 25% is usually a pretty good benchmark, so if you're around that, that's okay, which you are. So in general, your general fund balance is pretty solid. And that graph there just kind of shows your, the red is the general fund balance, and the blue is the other funds over the last three years. So you can see they decreased, but we talked about why they did. If you go to page four, so page four and five are just general fund information, I'll just touch on these quickly. Page four shows the revenue for 2014. The first two columns are budget to actual, and then compare that to 2013. So if you look at the very bottom, the total revenue, in 2014, you budgeted $4,050,000. You actually collected $4,154,000. So you collected just over $100,000 more than you budgeted. But if you look at, compared to 2013, you collected about $360,000 less than last year. And the majority of that is there was a transfer in from the Capital Projects since 2013 that there wasn't this year. So the bottom line is you collected more than you budgeted. And if you look at the graph there, that kind of shows the categories of where most of your funds come from. The red there is your largest portion of taxes and special assessments. If you go to page five, page five is your general fund expenditures. Again, the first two columns are 2014 budget to actual, and the last column is 2013 actual. There is not much change or much out of line with budget for the year, except if you look down the very last line, the operating transfers out, that was your transfer to the Capital Projects Fund, which was budgeted for, but it's just greater than last year. So that's why it looks a little off from last year. So in total, you budgeted $4,583,000. You actually spent $4,616,000, so you spent about $33,000 more than budgeted. But if you remember in the revenue page, you had additional revenue to cover that. Then if you look at the graph opposite there, it just shows you your breakdown of expenditures. Public safety is your largest expenditure category with 41%. The next is public works at 24, and then general government at 22. And then if we go to page six, page six is your utility income statement, so the water, sewer, and stormwater income statements for 2013 and '14. And I'll just draw your attention to the middle of the page there, the operating income. If you look at water's operating income in '14 was $325,000, so it was down slightly. Sewer's operating income was $213,000, which was up slightly from 2013. And the storm water was $100,000, which was down slightly from '13 as well. But in general, the cash balances for all these are positive. And if you look at a cash flow statement, which you don't have in this document, your operating cash flows are also positive, which is our good things. The PSC looks at the rate of return as a benchmark for how your rates are set. And your guys' rate of return for '14 was 3.76%, which was down from '13 at 3.9%. So your rate of return is decreasing slightly. And then if you look at the graph opposite there, it just shows your operating income over the last two years for water, sewer, and storm. They've stayed pretty consistent. Page seven, page seven, I won't go into too much detail, but it shows all the other funds in the city besides the general and the utilities. Their fund balance at the beginning of the year, their revenues, expenditures, and then their ending fund balances. Things I'll point out is TIF six and seven had a fund balance deficit at the beginning of the year, and at the end of the year, they're both positive, which is a good thing. If we look at page eight, just some other notes. The first paragraph there is probably the important, most important one concerning the audit, is we give the city an unmodified or clean auditor's opinion. And that means our opinion states that we found that your statements present fairly in all material specs of the financial activity of the city. The third paragraph talks about your fixed assets. The city added $2.3 million of general capital assets during the year. The large majority of that was for the buildings. Water, sewer, and storm added about $368,000 of fixed assets during the year. Then if you go to the long-term debt, your general obligation long-term debt decreased by $845,000 to an outstanding general obligation debt balance of $13,380,000, which is below, but getting close to your debt limit of $16,394,000. And the debt limit is 5% of the total equalized value of the city. And then the second to last paragraph, we also test internal controls of the city. We test some transactions and make sure things are operating correctly or the way they're designed, and we didn't find any issues with that. So that's all I have. The audit went really well. Dan provided everything, and is a pleasure to work with, so.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. Or if you think of anything later, you can ask Dan, and he can communicate with me what the questions are.
And do you guys typically make any recommendations, or you just do the audit and that's it?
We do make recommendations more on an ongoing basis with Dan. We're in communication with Dan pretty much throughout the year.
Oh, okay.
And he calls, and we email back and forth. So if you're looking for anything specific, you could let us know, and we could talk to you about it.
Okay.
But if we come across anything, or Dan has questions, we usually just talk about it right away.
Okay. Does anybody on the council have any questions? Does everybody understand everything clearly? Clearly.
That was the simple version.
Clearly, that's what we'd like to hear.
That is, it's a lot of work, I know it's a lot of work, so thank you, Dan, for well-done stuff.
No problem.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for driving down here.
Yes, thank you.
Have a safe trip home.
Thanks.
What kind of action do we need to take on this now?
None.
None? Okay. Well, maybe you want to stay around for number nine. Discussion and possible action regarding the issuance of $2.82 million in water revenue bonds.
I thought I'd kind of keep with the Fourth of July theme, the then and now, that being 2014, and this being the now. As we talked about last month, at early June, about all the various water projects that the city should undertake here in the next year to maintain and improve the level of water service and things of that nature to the city, we kind of compiled what the cost estimate is on all these projects, and it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $2.5 million. In the memo, I addressed why it's $2.8 million. There's legal requirements for debt reserves and things of that nature. Allers and Associates provided us with several different financing options on what would be the best way to finance this. We had them look at a 10-year repayment plan, a 15-year repayment plan, and a 20-year repayment plan. And staff thought, with the help of Allers, that the 15-years seemed to make the most sense for the city. It provides flexibility, because we don't know what could come down the line eight, nine years from now. We want to try to keep the rates as stable as possible. As you heard Joe say, our rate of return is slightly decreasing. So we'll probably be looking at a full rate case to get that back up to the acceptable range, so we don't have to see huge spikes in water rates down the road if we delay things. Maureen is here if you have any questions about the 10, 15, and 20-year repayment plan, or if you guys just have any other specific questions about the financing, or what any of these projects will do for the city, how we can help answer some of those questions, so.
And what I'll add to that, if everybody remembers back on June 2nd, I know it was a long time ago, we had the folks from Baxter Woodman here, and the gentleman gave the presentation where he taught us all those words about gradient pressure and things of that nature. This is what's, this is the action, this is the step that we would take, the financing piece, in order to rectify the situation that he discussed that day with us about the pressure zone, as well as replacement of well number two, some additional looping along West Madison, and a new water main on Janesville Street. So this is a combination of all water projects that are necessary, really, over the next year, in order to keep not only the existing facilities functioning at a proper level, but also to increase service in the low-pressure zone that's commonly referred to as the Tower Hill area. So this really does come down to a service level, as well as a quality of life issue. As Inga explained to us the other day, when she was filling up her pool, she couldn't wash her dishes at the same time. So, you know, we don't want Inga to have dirty dishes. So that discussion that we had back on June 2nd, this is the financing piece in order to rectify those situations. So I just wanted to create that nexus for the council as to, you know, kind of how we got here.
And this will not be general obligation debt, so this will not impact the ability to borrow for future projects, buildings, et cetera, because these are revenue bonds. So we're pledging the revenues of the utility and the sale of water to pay off the debt.
And Maureen can explain that mechanism, if the council has questions about it. But as Dan kind of indicated, how we would pay for this bond is by those future revenues generated by the water utility. So this won't impact the fire department, it won't impact the library, Parkview Drive, or any other future projects that are not water-related in the next upcoming years. And Dan and I's recommendation to go with the 15-year repayment plan as opposed to the 10-year allows us that flexibility to address another project if it just comes along, that we don't foresee at this time. For example, if a project moves forward in Pierce Farms, and we need to serve that area, or extend utilities to an area in Crossroads Park that's currently not served, you know, the 15-year repayment plan affords us that flexibility to be able to respond to those future developments. you know, the fifteen-year repayment plan affords us that flexibility to be able to respond to those future development needs that are unknown at this time.
What are the issuance costs specifically?
Great. So are we going to look at specifically the fifteen-year term, Dan? Is that what we want to refer to?
Unless there's desire to talk about the ten or the twenty.
I was just thinking of the fifteen-year term.
Okay. So, you know, I don't have the total right here, but I can, it's under the finance-related expenses. And if I can just do some quick math here, it looks like it's about, is that around seventy thousand?
Yeah, with the underwriting discount.
Correct, yeah, which is their compensation. And then, as Dan mentioned, that you would be borrowing for the debt service reserve as well, which is listed there.
Which is two hundred and forty thousand. That would be money we would keep in the bank that's required under the terms.
Yeah, so those would be the additional amounts other than the project costs that you would be borrowing for.
Does anybody else have any further questions? So is there a separate action for ten and a separate action for eleven on the agenda?
No, we just have the resolution. We have both resolutions. We also have a resolution under eleven. There are two different resolutions.
Okay, so there's an action for ten, resolution two thousand and fifteen, fourteen, a resolution providing for the sale of approximately two million eight hundred and twenty thousand.
Did we ever get the resolution from Corals?
Oh, did they not forward that to you with the approximate? So they sent you the agenda language but not the resolution? Okay. We can follow up with them tomorrow. It looks, and have the clerk then sign that as well, who's not present tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So what, so I don't need to leave with it signed, so we can just follow, we'll get it from Corals?
Corals was supposed to provide us the resolution for the, basically authorizing the two point eight-two million. Pretty standard boilerplate language.
Correct. So we can follow up with them tomorrow, make sure that you guys have.
So exactly how would we proceed?
Not at all.
Okay.
Okay, is that right?
Yes, there's no resolution for them to consider.
Dan, as we had talked about, the resolution isn't necessary with revenue bond issues to proceed with the issuance. It's more of just a, something that we, like a best practice that we like to do with the revenue issues. So I can follow up with Corals and Brady tomorrow and see how best to proceed with that.
Because Todd said we could also just pass a motion too, correct?
Correct. Did he say that this morning, or this afternoon when we spoke? Was that an earlier conversation? Okay, then.
We could bring forth the resolution two weeks from now.
Okay, that would.
That way we can keep the ball moving and shoot for that August fourth sale. The reason I was shooting for that August fourth sale is it's four to six weeks ahead of the Fed meeting before they increase interest rates.
So we could approve filed resolution twenty fifteen twelve, which is included in the packet, which declares the official intent. Or should we wait on that as well, Mark? Do you have any thoughts?
Well, it would make the most sense to consider them together because as they indicate, the resolution that's first required would be to approve the sale of the revenue bonds. And then once that's approved, then their resolution declaring that a portion of those revenue bonds, well, that revenue bonds will be reimbursed in expenditures, I guess. So it seems that that's.
Yeah.
Together, don't they?
Yeah. And Howie, where are we in terms of even starting with that booster project? Are we even close to sending it out to bid? Yeah?
They plan on having it, that they would be able to send it out for bid this fall, but they would rather wait till a little bit later in the year because a lot of the contractors are very busy. And so if you send it out later in the year, you're, you know, with the ability that they could work in December or January on some parts of it, but they want most of that to happen next spring for the work, so you get a better cost on it.
So there's really no logistical purpose for, when I was putting this together, Howie was on vacation, I thought we were closer to sending this thing out to bid. So logistically, there's, there probably won't even be a need to even ever do resolution twenty-four, or number fourteen.
Okay.
But if we could get a motion to go forward on the two point eight-two million.
And what, exactly what the motion say?
Motion to proceed with the two point eight-two million dollar borrowing with a fifteen-year amortization for water works bonds.
Do I have someone to make that motion? There's a motion and a second. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. So then we move down to general items. Is that where?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Our next meeting date will be Tuesday, July twenty-first at seven PM. And our team building exercise.
I'd like to make a motion to table the team building exercises until all of the aldermen can be on camera with us. I make a motion to table.
There's a motion and a second to table the team building exercise until all, like, until Dave can appear at a council meeting too, or?
Camera with all of us.
Is that your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. There is a motion to table the team building exercises until all council members can make a physical appearance. And there's a second, correct? Let's do a roll call vote. Alderperson Adams?
Aye.
Alderperson Lotter?
Aye.
Alderperson Striegel?
Aye.
Alderperson Zajak?
Aye.
And Alderperson Roche? Motion carries. The council has formally declared they no longer want to participate in team building exercises until all council members can be physically present. Mayor and Alderperson reports. Nancy?
Nothing today.
Dave? Teresa? Jeremy? Maxine? The only thing I would like to say is that we had a very nice Fourth of July. I was really excited to have Maxine be our parade marshal. The parade went off pretty well. There were only a couple of minor glitches here and there. We had lots of compliments on the parade. And we had quite a large crowd, so that was a very nice weekend. And then we had lots of activities up at Schilberg. And I'm just excited that we continue with this tradition. And I'll let Howie talk about Parkview Drive. That's my report. Al, you want to go?
Sure. I would, you know, obviously echo the mayor's comments on the Fourth of July. You know, this was the first year that I've been in this capacity at the Fourth of July, but I think it's about my eighth year that I've attended the Fourth of July. And, you know, very happy to see Mac step up and assist greatly with the parade activities. You know, and then to see all the folks that, you know, we had great weather, but to see all the folks that gathered around Schilberg for the fireworks on Saturday night. You know, heard a lot of positive comments about the community during the weekend and then throughout the course of this week about how things went. So, you know, just a great community event that, you know, I hope folks can appreciate and don't take for granted because there's very few communities that I think have the ability to pull something like that off, especially in a community of fifty-six hundred people, to gather the support and volunteerism to make something like that happen over the course of three days when there's a lot of other activities going on and a lot of other things that people could be doing. They choose to stay here and invite their friends here and their family here. And that's, I mean, that's something that is really special to this community and something that I hope to see continue on and grow and get better and more support. And, you know, it's been going on for, I don't know, thirty years, and I hope it happens for another thirty more.
Thank you. And I would like to thank all of our volunteers because this is very heavily weighted in our volunteers showing up, and it takes so many of them. I can't remember how many Brian and Paul said that they have up at the.
Yeah, it was like three hundred volunteers just at the, up at Schilberg alone. Plus, you know, we had probably twenty at the parade. I mean, yeah, it is really a community effort to make it happen.
So thank you to all of them. Director of Public Works?
Okay, I'll give the Parkview Drive latest update. As you saw, they milled today the downtown areas, and they plan on being done with the milling tomorrow. And they're going to try and do the cleanup areas. They have some manhole castings to remove, a couple more driveways to finish. And they want to start the landscaping, some of the dirt work tomorrow. And they are done sidewalk and curbs, the ones that were installed are what they're going to install except for finishing the driveways. With good weather, they would like to pave Thursday and Friday. So they may be done with the project by Friday with all of it, which would be good because the contract, actually, they don't have to be done until October thirty-first. But with all the openings they had with their subcontractors, it's been like the last two or three days a little chaotic downtown and stuff. And for tomorrow and the next day, it will be too. But hopefully by Friday, the entire project should be done, you know, for what they're going to be doing. So when they pave the downtown areas, there's going to be, you know, some more inconvenience with parking. But it should be for just, you know, that one day in front of each of those places, so. And otherwise, it has gone, you know, fairly fast. I mean, once they did start, so. Even with a couple of bad weather issues like today, they got there a little bit later than they wanted. So they plan to be done with the downtown milling by ten o'clock. But with the bad weather yesterday and their other locations, I guess, started about four hours later, so. But they were still down there like right at seven o'clock, finishing up the downtown, so. So hopefully by Friday, with good weather, they might just be, you know, done with all of it. The railroad has not heard from their contractor though for when that crossing will be done, but that's a separate non-city project, but it's still on their list to be finished. And they did tell us they will not do it the chicken barbecue weekend, so. So that's, so other than that, Parkview Drive hopefully will be done by the end of the week.
Great.
Does the railroad also have the October thirty-first deadline?
No, they just have, they have a list of projects just for this year. And they're, you know, in their bidding, their contractor will just go to which is, you know, more, the city that's more convenient for them. But they made an emphasis for them not to work here that weekend in August, so.
I'm just looking for a timeframe because they don't usually hurry.
Yeah, they don't have a timeline except it's in their twenty fifteen budget is all.
Thank you. Police Department report?
We made it through the fourth. You know, I just want to say thank you to all the officers and office staff. Our department's not that big, so for us to contribute officers to the run, to the parade, and to the fireworks, it takes just about everybody on our department. And we made it through once again, like we do every year, and that's about it.
Yeah, we forgot the Optimist Run too. They had about five hundred participants. It's a great turnout. The director of the library is not here. Joint Fire not here. Inga, do you want to say anything? Finance Director?
As if I haven't done enough damage tonight. There's going to be a press release going out. We are changing how we send out the water bills. The postcards are going to be a thing of the past, and there's going to be paper bills going out. Allows us to give a little more information on the water bill. And it also allows us, if there's other departments that want to insert a public service announcement or something like that, we have communication with all of our residents six times a year. So if we're spending the money on postage, we can easily insert something else into the monthly bill to provide information. So those will be coming out next week. And on the website is a sample of what the bills look like, along with electronic payment options and signing up for paperless bills.
All right, perfect. Dave, I know when Teresa and Linda are going to be back at city council meetings, when can we anticipate that you will be returning? Of July?
Yep.
That's exciting. Team building will be on the next agenda. Okay, twenty-three closed session item. Nancy, do you want to read this for us, please?
Consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section nineteen point eight-five sub one sub C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility pertaining to employment agreement for Scott Markhardt.
Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries, and we will now go to.